I rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you for coming to the meeting this evening. Our chairman is out of town, so I will be running the meeting. And I do believe we have Director Cronquist on Zoom as well. Have board members?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you, Becky. Have board members had a chance to look at the agenda?
I motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no. Hearing none, the agenda has been adopted. And now we'll go over to Superintendent Jessie for your report.
Thanks Vice Chair Davidson, other Board Directors, student representatives, families, staff, community members, and students. I will start off. Couple meetings ago, we had mentioned about Evergreen Promise. We actually had a presentation on it. We, that is a partnership between the Shelton School District and Evergreen State College. Any of our graduates for any of the three high schools this year or next year get to go to, if they are accepted into Evergreen State, they go there tuition-free and reduced expenses, which includes room and board and books. So lots of opportunities, and they have also waived the application fee, and you can get assistance with the application itself. So lots there. We have Evergreen Promise, and the information about it is on the Shelton School District website. If anybody who's out there listening, or has a family, a friend, that is either graduating from any of the three high schools, again, this year or next year, do look into it. What a deal to go tuition-free guaranteed, irregardless of your financial status, or whoever you are, it doesn't matter. You just simply are enrolled and graduating from one of the three high schools, you can go. And one of the real reasons I'm mentioning this again this evening is that we have a number of students who, over the last couple weeks, have received acceptance into Evergreen State and are already ready to matriculate and enroll, ready for the next fall. The number of events coming up, that'll be posted on our website. I'll make more announcements to you, the public, about an upcoming event, I believe, probably at the next board meeting, so that you can know when it is. Love to give you more information about it. I think it's a really neat deal, and one that you should just automatically just at least get information on. You might not have been interested in Evergreen State, because tuition for any university or college is expensive. So neat deal for all of our students that we have here that'll be graduating this year and next year. And thank you so much for the state legislative for funding that. Could you also fund K-12 education as well? That'd be fabulous. So I'm gonna put my plug in there. Did you, did you know that we also have an online hybrid program at Choice? I think it's one of the things that, come to find out, not many people know about. Choice has an online hybrid program, has for a number of years. We made a couple changes along the way around how we support students in person, so that they can have drop-in and assistance onsite with a certificated teacher in addition to the online program. So it's one thing to get online, plug in, and do the assignments, and be self-directed. It's another thing to also receive some support in person. So that's what we offer at Choice High School. It's wonderful. We've got a number of seats, so we've enrolled an additional six students, I believe probably seven maybe by the end of the week, into that, students who are looking for an online program. I know it's one of the more popular things, talking to some of my colleagues in other school districts. So we've kind of, I'm doing an extra pitch if you're, if people are looking at that. That's something that we do offer here for the Shelton School District. And that program, for the online program, is for grades seven through 12. So I want to repeat that. For grade seven, 12, online, hybrid. You can get additional support. Please check it out. More information online as well. And you can always just call Choice 712-SCHOOL if you wanted to get more information about that and all the other services they provide there at Choice. Lots of improvement, lots of really cool things going on at Choice. So I just want a little celebration for them. And last but not least, OMS, Olympic Middle School. I was there today with other school leaders. We were working on, particularly about our commitments to our students and our staff, and the things that we want to do to, for self-improvement. Really cool to hear about each of the schools working on how they want to support our students with their social, emotional learning. Of course, we talked a lot about instruction as well. Really neat to see at OMS. We went to some different classrooms, in particular, it's the grade-level teams, so you have your social studies, your English, then you move over to science, and then math. And we saw how there was common experiences for the students. So everybody had vocab, they're working on vocabulary, working on their specifically notebooks. Everybody had a structured notebook. We were empowering student voice in each of the classrooms. They also had set up so the students can come closer to instruction, and then they were engaged as well. And then the rigor and pace was also right on par with state standards and working there, and students were well-received. And you could just feel the relationship and the partnership between the students and the staff at OMS. So I just want to give a shout-out. I know Mary Johnson, the principal, Mike Kraft, who's also the vice principal there, they're here today. Shout-out to them and the staff at OMS. Amazing things. And in fact, this evening, coming up right after my comments and report here in about 20 seconds, is going to be the Glee Club from OMS. Super excited to see our students outstanding. Really encourage our families, like if you have things, if you're wondering how kids are getting an education here in Shelton, stop by. I'm sure Mary and Mike would love to receive you and show you the wonderful things going on at OMS and how we are educating all of our students who walk through the door. So with that, I will conclude my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. And now we can get to the exciting part, which is a presentation from the OMS students.
Is it working now? All right. Hi, guys. All right, first of all, I just want to say thank you Shelton School Board and Superintendent Jessie for letting us be here today. This is very awkward. So we're honored to have these few minutes to introduce you to our small but mighty Glee Club. This year, we've been working really hard to get our choir and our music program back up and running. And it's been a really exciting journey. We had a change in music, with music teachers back in October, and it allowed us to just jump right in and decide that this was the time to make sure that we could provide an opportunity for our students who are super passionate about singing. Our Glee, our Glee Club started small, and it started taking place just in a music class for students that were interested in singing. They've already had two opportunities to perform, so they performed at the tree-lighting ceremony in December, and they also performed at our Martin Luther King Jr. Assembly. But starting on February 25th, we are extending this program to after-school. So our students will have an opportunity to meet and stay one time a week after school, and we are hoping to continue to grow this program. I want to take a moment to tell you about our amazing music teacher, Amy Kuiper. Fun fact, she actually started the music program 20 years ago when Olympic Middle School opened in 2004. She taught music there for many years, and then she went on to do all sorts of other amazing stuff. And this year graciously stepped back up in October and jumped right in with both feet. At this time, I'd like to invite Ms. Kuiper up. She's going to share a little bit about the song that the students are singing today.
Good evening. I'm Amy Kuiper. So we actually sang this song when I was teaching choir about 15 years ago, and we chose to sing it for Martin Luther King Jr., because at the time, we were waiting for the people in the world, the important people, the adult people, to make the changes that we wanted to see, changes for equity and diversity. And here it is 15 years later, and we're still waiting. And so that's what the song talks about, and we talked about being the change we want to see in the world. And so we sang that at the Martin Luther King Jr. Assembly, and we are going to regale you with a rendition of that this evening. So do we go now? All right, all right. One. Ready, guys?
Way to go, students. That was amazing, and I'm very proud of all four of you. Hello, everyone. I'm Mike Kraft. I'm the assistant principal, proud assistant principal at OMS. And I'd like to take a moment to introduce our incredible students. I asked them prior to coming out tonight, I said, "Who wants to talk on the microphone?" And I had one, but they all seemed to share in the same view as far as what singing means to them. So I have Evelyn, Aubrey, Genesee, and Dalton. And they have worked so hard and truly love what they do. Each of them has a unique reason for being a part of this group. And so I'd like to, Aubrey, you want to say a few words and tell them why you like to sing? Go for it.
I really love singing, and it's like, kind of really important to me. It's one of my favorite things to do, and it's also just like really fun.
All right. And from Genesee, Genesee said that it brings her happiness when she sings. And so Evelyn and Dalton also agreed with what Aubrey and Genesee had mentioned. So thank you for your time and supporting the arts at OMS. We appreciate you.
All right. Thank you very much Evelyn, Aubrey, Genesee, and Dalton. I think it's a wonderful reminder how music can always bring us a lot of happiness and joy. So thank you for sharing that with us at our school board meeting. All right, we'll give them just a second to leave, and then we'll move on to community comments. All right. First up for community comments this evening is William Sullivan. And we do have three minutes for each person, and the directions are also up there on the board for anyone to review.
Hi, my name's William Sullivan. I came here about a month ago and talked to you guys. My daughter had come home from school saying that she wished that her skin wasn't white anymore, and she wished that her skin was brown, from Bordeaux Elementary. And I put my, made sure I put my email on the list again. I'm hoping that maybe you guys will respond or something, or maybe you guys checked into it. Because the school doesn't know how it came, or they just say, "We don't know." And I said, "Well, my daughter didn't get that from anywhere. She spends all day long with you. It came from you." And they just don't know where it came from. That's not an acceptable answer. These are the same teachers in the same school that says they don't want cameras in the classrooms. We have no faith left in you guys. Even up here tonight, we have teacher stand up here, and she's standing up here in the best effort of being a good person. And what did she say? "We're waiting for the equity and diversity of the world to catch up." So we're having teachers suggest their thoughts on children that aren't old enough to think for themselves. Your job is to teach children how to think, not what to think. And we have teachers pushing their personal beliefs on our children, and it's not acceptable anymore. We have a president that is willing to fight with us. We are willing to stand up. We're not going to take it anymore. Same time that this is happening to my child in school, she was assaulted on the school bus. Nobody wants to get the cameras off of the school bus. The principal says, "It's not my job. It's that it's up to the school bus." The school bus people won't give me the camera footage. So did she, is that really a bad assault? I don't know. All the bus driver could tell me was that she, I can try to talk to the kid's parents. They don't speak English. What do you want me to do about it? That's what the bus driver told me. This kid that's older than my child, it's my child's in first grade, this child was in third or fourth grade. My child said, "All I can go by is what my child said." Right? But this kid took my kid's glasses, and then I got them back three, four days later. And again, mysteriously, the bus driver didn't know how they came back, just mysteriously, my kid's glasses came back. I would like to know when you guys checked into this, because I let you guys know a month ago. So I'd like to know who you contacted, who you checked in with to check on my concerns with the school. And I'd like it back in an email, please, and let me know who you talked to at the schools and what date you talked to them, so I can see if you're even following up on the community's concerns. We're talking about budgets and things lately. I've already expressed my concerns about people getting raises when we're having to fire people, right? We could roll back the raises from the past four years so we don't have to fire people. And I'll let you guys go with this, because I'm a business owner here, and I have been for most of my life. The way that the school used to empty out the end-of-year budget was they'd come to my coffee stand and buy $400 worth of coffee instead of going down to Walmart and buying some paper or some pencils. It's time for accountability from this country, and from our school board, and from our teachers, and we want it now. Thank you.
Jessica Brissette.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Jessica, and I'm a parent of a student here in the district. And this is the second time I've come to the Board, not recently, but I want to touch base on bullying and what we as a school board and a community are doing to crack down on the bullying that is happening within our school. I am very big on this, and it's disgusting. One in five students are being bullied every day. What hap, those students, they are now at greater risk for anxiety, depression, suicide. We have kids killing themselves because they're being bullied at school. Where I'm concerned is the lack of communication. When something happens with my student in school, I'm not notified. Nobody calls, nobody texts, there's no carrier pigeon to let me know what's going on with my student while they are in your essential custody for eight hours a day. Right? So if my student comes home and is being harassed at school, how am I, if they don't bring it up to me, the school knows, but they're not, there's no communication. Right? It's very sad, and it's disgusting that we have children killing themselves. I'm sure y'all are aware of the recent murder that took place of 19-year-old. That's disgusting. I'm sure that that didn't just stem, right? I'm sure that there was some background and some things. And they're in the care of teachers, people that we put our trust in on a day-to-day basis, daily, Monday through Friday from 7:30. I think my child leaves the house 7:20 and then gets home at 4:30. She sees y'all more than she sees me. So I just need some communication between the district, the teachers, who I'm entrusting my care of my child in, and myself. You know, there's a very disconnect in communication. Also, parents, whoever's listening, please talk to your kids about suicide awareness. It's an uncomfortable subject. Somebody's got to talk about it. Somebody has to. It's gross, it's uncalled-for, and too many kids are killing themselves because they're being bullied on a day-to-day basis. If you see it happening, please say something. It takes two seconds to step in and say, "Hey, cut it." Not okay. And we're not here to play like that. Please do something, and accountability, accountability, communication. Those are just basic, basic things that we're asking for. Don't let us down. Thank you.
Marilyn Aaron.
Good evening. There seems to be kind of a pattern here. So you probably are aware of this, but we have a serious problem here in our schools, and it's not an exaggeration to say that it's happening every single day. Drugs are being dealt at the schools, fights are breaking out over drugs and drug money. Students are vaping openly in our school buildings without consequences. The issues are not only harming the students involved, but are also creating a dangerous and disruptive environment for those who are there to learn. Students who are caught dealing or using drugs should face consequences that deter this behavior, not just a slap on the wrist. If you walk near the A-Building bathrooms during the day at SHS, you can and most likely will find to 10 to 15 students loitering, vaping, and doing drugs and refusing to go to class. They do this at almost every bathroom that's open. Students cannot use the restroom, or are afraid to use the restroom because of this fact. When the students are told to go back to class, staff are met with blatant disrespect and defiance because there are no consequences. Even more troubling, there are high school students that are attempting to sell vapes and marijuana to middle school students on our buses, where our younger students are being targeted and exposed to dangerous substances. We have to think about the broader impact on the entire student body. There are consequences of inaction. When there are no real consequences, what happens? Students learn they can break rules without accountability. Good kids feel unsafe and unprotected. Parents lose trust in the school system. Drug use and vaping become normalized, and we are setting these kids up for failure when we do that. When disciplinary reports are not accurately reported or are downplayed, it not only undermines the seriousness of the situation, but also prevents us from identifying patterns and addressing the root causes, ultimately allowing these issues to escalate and put more students at risk. We are failing these students by allowing this to continue. We should be preparing them for success, not enabling behaviors that will more than likely lead down a dangerous path. I am not here just to point out the problem. We should want to work towards solutions. If our current policies are not working, they need to be reevaluated and strengthened. If possible, more supervision in problem areas like bathrooms and hallways and on buses will deter students from engaging in these behaviors. Whether it's longer suspensions, mandatory drug education programs, or alternative disciplinary actions, we need measures that discourage repeat offenses. Parents need to be informed and held accountable when their children are engaging in these behaviors. Schools and families must work together. This is not only a school issue, it's a community issue. We need partnerships with law enforcement, health professionals, and youth organizations to intervene. The questions we need to be asking ourselves are, are we willing to let this continue? Do we want our schools to be a place where our students feel unsafe? Do we want to set these kids up for failure by ignoring their behavior? Or do we want to take actionable steps to create a safe, supportive, and disciplined learning environment? Our kids, our schools, our staff, and our community deserves better.
I don't have anyone else signed up for community comments. Is there anyone online? No. Okay. Then we will move on to item six, which is reports and recognitions. And the only one we have listed today is the report from our student board representatives. So we're going to start with you, Ellen Ramirez, if you can give us a report on Cedar High School.
Yeah, so at Cedar High School, I've heard that our leadership is planning a Valentine's Day assembly for, they said Thursday, but I've also heard Friday, so I'm sure leadership will update me on that. Also, something, something I think is pretty nice is that even through the late starts that we've had last week, I noticed that the students were very engaged even during classes. Even though they didn't show up on time, they showed up like maybe five minutes after, after they were supposed to show up, because you know, when you have snow on the road, it's kind of hard to get to school. And yeah, we've also had ambassadors start to reach out. We've gone to OBGH. I was actually there giving presentations to the seventh and eighth graders at OBGH. It was really nice. We had some students that were definitely interested in going to Cedar. And I'm really proud of our fellow ambassadors for having the guts to go up there and present to a whole bunch of seventh and eighth graders. And we have ambassadors, is actually, we already have planned out our entire schedule for outreach to different schools, so we've got that going on at Cedar.
All right, thank you, Ellen. Abigail for Shelton High School.
10 girls along with four alternates are going to state for girls wrestling. Boys wrestling is sending nine and six alternates to state. Both Dance and Cheer both had senior nights last Friday at our last home boys basketball game. ASB hall passes have been purchased, and admin will be going through training next week. These hall passes are specifically to defeat the bathroom problem with a lot of skipping and like just those general problems to help keep kids in class. So admin will be going through that training to help get that put in place. And then we'll start using those, I believe, the start of the trimester is when they'll be fully ready to use. And then the same thing, kind of leadership and admin are working closely to find ways to build up more school spirit and more school culture. Some of these ways are trophy cases and state placement banners hung up in the mini-dome. So, yeah.
All right, thank you both for your reports. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Okay. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. And this has our usual proposed minutes from the last meeting, personnel report, and a few warrants.
I motion to approve this evening's consent agenda.
I'll second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Hearing none, the consent agenda has passed. Moving on to discussion and action items. 8.01 is the Proposed Revised Policy Number 3230, Searches of Students and Student Privacy. This is a first reading, and so there will just be the first reading and discussion.
Good evening, Board Directors, student representatives, Superintendent Jessie. My name is Dusty Trickle, Director of Student Wellness. I'm here this evening to discuss the first reading of the Revised Policy 3230 regarding searches of students and student privacy. This policy addresses when searches may be necessary and the rights of students on campus. Much of the language in the policy has been moved into procedures such as locker searches, and it also addresses legal ages of students in relation to their confidential information. Are there any questions from the Board?
Any questions? Becky, are you still with us?
Yes, I'm still here. No, I have no questions. Thank you. It's a lot of work to redo all that. I did- I did read it.
Yes, there was a lot of redline there, so, yeah, lots of new text. And of course, this is just the first reading, so as we look at it again or review that, if there are any questions, we can, of course, forward those to the Board Chair and Superintendent to address for the second reading and possible approval of that. But it looks like there aren't any questions right now, so thank you very much. And you're up there for the second one, which is 8.02, Proposed Deletion of Policy Number 3121, Compulsory Attendance.
Yes, so as you stated, this is just a proposal to delete this policy. WASDA has suggested that the requirements outlined in this policy are sufficiently defined in the law and contract and are otherwise considered unnecessary at the policy level.
Okay, are there any questions about the deletion of Policy 3121? Because it is being recommended for approval, so we will vote on this this evening.
I was going to ask, but you answered my question, if it had been superseded or covered somewhere else because it's been deleted, but you answered that already, so thank you.
I motion to approve, you've been asked a question. The Proposed Deletion of Policy Number 3121, Compulsory Attendance.
And I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Proposed Deletion of Policy Number 3121 regarding compulsory attendance. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. Hearing none, that policy has now passed for deletion.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright. Lauren, do you have a legislative update for us?
Yeah, just a quick update. The big three for education and legislation again are our materials, supplies, and operating costs, MSOC. Transportation money and special education bills are continuing to work their way through their houses of origin this week before the first policy cutoff, which is February 21st. At that point, the bills will swap their houses of origin and no new introductions will take place. As of last week, over 1,600 bills had been introduced in the legislature. It's been a legislative-heavy year. This afternoon, those three big bills actually went through the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which is where they discuss their funding at four o'clock. So, at the next meeting, I will know if those bills have moved forward onto their, the House of Representatives or the Senate respectively, and what the concessions or amendments were. The first one is Senate Bill 5192, which is the Materials, Supplies, and Operating Cost Funding. The second one that was heard today is Substitute Senate Bill 5263 Concerning Special Education Funding. The big change for that one was that the original multiplier was reduced from 1.5 to 1.32, but the pre-K multiplier remained at its level. The big thing about this bill is it removes the 16% special education enrollment funding cap. And then finally, Senate Bill 5187 Providing Adequate and Predictable Student Transportation was also heard this afternoon. That one hopefully will supply funding in the amount of $400 per student on, who meet the requirements of McKinney-Vento, which would boost that a lot. Other important bills that have come around, there's been a lot on education. There's been two, a House bill and a Senate bill to increase student access for free meals. There's been a bill that keeps rolling forward on expanding access to grants within the Paid Family and Medical Leave Insurance Program for small school districts. And Senate Bill 5442, which establishes a college promise pilot program. So, at the next meeting, I'll know what these final amendments are, the changes are, and I'll give a little bit of a longer update and hope that these, these changes to funding will be approved so we can close that gap and not go through, not go through this year again.
Alright, thank you for the update on that, we look forward to hearing what ends up moving forward. Alright, we are now down to Board Member comments. Becky, would you like to start with that since we've got you online?
Sure. Well, thank you Lauren, that was a really good update. Appreciate all the work you put into keeping up with all that stuff. Thank you to the kids who sang, I'm not sure if they're still there, but you did a good job. Topic of bullying has always, as you guys know, been important to me and I take it very seriously. And I've said many times, we need specific information on... A lot of people make the general statement, but it's really hard to follow up on something like that without more specifics. You can certainly email the information to us. And thank you to, for the student reports. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you Becky, and thank you for joining us by Zoom tonight. Alright, Director Dale?
Yeah, I just wanna give a couple thank-yous. The OMS choir, thank you, and all the teachers that did that. Love to see that, what's happening in other schools here. A big thank you to everybody for last week with the snow and the weather. We know that creates chaos in your grade schools and your classrooms and teachers. And Mason County's crazy because there's snow in one place and not another. So I just wanna recognize all the work behind the scenes to make that happen. So thank you to teachers and bus drivers and parents for being patient and just really appreciate all of that. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Alright, Lauren?
I forgot to put my plug in for legislation and remind everybody that you can go onto wah.ledge.gov and you can sign in and you can state whether you're pro or con on a bill and you're not required to be on camera or, or talk. It's a cool feature to show that, you know, we really need this funding. And, and then my other one was, we just passed over the 100th day of school this week. So, just know that we're in that second quick half. And thank you for everybody that continues to come and join us each, each Tuesday that we're here and we appreciate your comments and thank you.
Yeah, thank you all very much for coming, thank you for the community comments that were said. Definitely appreciate the student performances that we get to see. It's wonderful to see all different kinds of student performances and give them a chance to shine like that. I always loved music and loved choir when I was in school at all ages, so that was really fun to see. Thank you both for your, your reports, it's great to always hear what's going on in the schools. And I've seen just a number of different social media posts all over about all the different student athletes and how, you know, whether they made it to districts or not, it's wonderful that they've had the opportunities that they've had, but congratulations to all those who have gone on and even are going, moving on to state-level competition. We've got all sorts of students that are able to participate in that, which is wonderful. And outside of that, I do appreciate all of the patient and, like you said, the behind-the-scenes effort that goes in from our maintenance crew to everybody that's up early checking on the roads. And we have a lot of microclimates in Shelton. I live in one that happens to get a lot of snow and ice, it's always challenging. We still have snow and ice on our road. It seems like it's never going to go away. And, and so I definitely understand the challenges that people have out there and I was worried about my own 17-year-old driving to school and that because they just don't have a lot of experience with it. So, you know, I always tell her, "Go as slow as you need to get there and if you don't feel comfortable, you know, let me drive you there." Because my husband and I still had to go to work as well. But, I do appreciate people's patience with all of that and I know that we've got a little bit of a midwinter break coming up, so I hope everybody gets a chance to do something they enjoy and have a little bit of relaxation. And outside of that, happy Valentine's Day. We do not have any need for a, an executive session this evening, so if there's a motion to adjourn, this meeting will be over.
I motion we adjourn.
I second the motion.
Alright, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say no, hearing none, this meeting's adjourned.